Welcome back everybody to the channel. My name is NutRaisen. We shall be studying a little bit more of PLO. Although I'm not quite sure how I'm supposed to study like this. Because Garfield paid a visit. And that doesn't help. That. Alright. Cuteness factor out of the way. Yeah, yeah. I guess I have to study one-handed for now. Oh, no, never mind. Oh, he's hitting on the keyboard now, so the stream might end in a second. Button does Garfield. Alright, 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 alright. Both hands and one keyboard back to myself. Just yet. Alrighty, so wait. Wait. Yeah, yesterday we were studying, where's the button? Here's the button. We're studying this spot, button versus cutoff in a three-bet pot. We are the button, we are in position, we saw a straightening, a straight flop. That, so three-two straight, that didn't have, that was rainbow. And I think we go to a different board for now. And maybe um go through a couple of, uh, go through a few paired boards. The straight boards yesterday did yield some uh surprises. There were two or three hands that were 100% bets as a bluff that were pretty surprising. Remember the ace, king, queen, queen, for example? Um, right, so let's go with the golden. One that's disconnected for now. Go with the eight-eight deuce. That is a rainbow two, so the eight of spades, eight of diamonds, deuce of clubs. Eight of spades, eight of diamonds. Eight of spades, eight of diamonds, deuce of clubs. Then loaded range in here as well. But hearts. So um, I mean you now already changed one range, but on the strating board we only see bet 27% of the time and check the rest of the time. See how this changes on the paired board. And already can see a huge difference, right? The checking range looks way different. And it appears we are gonna be favoring betting here. That's the eight-eight spades, eight of diamonds, deuce of clubs. Yep. Yeah, huge difference. Percent. Okay. So let me update the study spot overlay and then bring up the, the poll. At one point I'll have all of that done before the stream starts. Oh, right. So, got that set. Copy that up here. See if it is a new situation. And what else? Alright, the poll. There you go. Almost done. Check. Or c-bet 33%. Alrighty. Cool. So got the poll ready as well. And let's see. So um, yeah, already one huge difference is, as I said earlier, we are checking now only 30%, whereas on the nine-eight-seven rainbow board, we were roughly betting 30% and checking 70%. We don't have any buckets right now, so just gonna show you this all over again. Do we want buckets? Only eight-deuce. Um, I think let's do without for now. Again, the dotted out card here is a queen. It's not, it's only gonna show up in these lists as a dot. Hmm. Okay. Cool. So, queen-nine-seven-six right off the bat, uh potentially an interesting one? Cause I have a, I have a feeling about this one. I'll leave it up for a moment. So again, the spot is, the same as yesterday, we are on the button, we, oh, we three-bet a cutoff race first in. We see a flop of eight-eight deuce rainbow for now. And we are holding the queen-nine-seven-six, so we have two backdoor flushes. Which on a paired board I would think is nowhere near as important as on an unpaired board. Hey, hey, hey! Some peeps voting uh, snowman KW saying two guessing with two backdoor flush draws. I'm curious to uh hear your guys' opinions if the backdoor flush draws are, are a deciding factor here. Roland's thought saying one, I mean two. Yeah, I gotta go with two as well, but mainly for the reason is that we kind of block the eight. We have a lot of cards that usually go with eights. We need nine-eight, seven-eight, uh eight-six. Oh, MFG, oh MFG, oh MFG is here. Good to see you, sir. So I'd say this is probably gonna be a bet more often than not. Especially for a third. Was yesterday's bet sizing on the straight board, I think it was 50%, right? Yeah, I believe so. So let's go with the bet, and it is more of a bet than it is more of a check. Cool. It's slightly more profitable. We do take it down on the paired boards quite a bit. And here, these are rather excellent blockers to, to an eight without, you know, holding an eight. I would think. This is queen six, probably. Well, we'll see. Oh, by the way, if you guys uh would like to see some buckets being mixed in here, as in not the, our entire range of hands, let me know, and I can, I can do that. No, I'm a KW with a bet. Yeah, I think, I would say the most interesting is here, thing here is gonna be seeing the frequencies. Sorry. Um, Roland's Todd also back in the channel. Oh no, you, already saw you there. I get easily confused, what can I say? I got up an hour ago. Will Gaff and Vinnie play today too? Yes, sir. They will be playing today and tomorrow, and then going forward they'll take Sundays and Wednesdays off, I believe. So changes out the backdoor flush draw, interesting question. So let's bet, and it is 97% uh a bet. Let's go with the, is, is queen six. So not, well, let's see. Not really. Let's sort it by probabilities. I don't think we'll be able to see a pattern here. The hand is uh pretty strong no matter what. And we do block the eight a little bit, holding the, wait, where, where's the window? Holding the queen, holding the six. The queen less so, but the eight-six, we kind of, we do block neatly. At least a bit, you know. The other hand was a stronger blocker to the eight, I would say. So again, it's the suit we don't have that gets bet 100%. And let's see which ones get checked at a high frequency. Nice to see you, Chi-Ching. Thank you very much. Are you on your, on your lunch, Chase? Welcome back, sir. Let's stop it by for long as you're at your lunch break. Yeah, okay. I can see that taking precedence. Thank you for dropping in, though. Um, so what's being checked at 100% is one that doesn't have a backdoor flush draw at all. Seems to be pretty much the only thing I can easily discern here. Oh, that didn't that didn't work, Chi-Ching. Of course, the shout-out only works if I put the exclamation point in front of it. If you guys would like to see some two-card magic in unlimited tournaments, check out Chi-Ching's channel. She's one of the nicest people on Twitch. And deserves all the viewers. Jeremy Martin, thank you very much for saying that. It means a lot. Cheers. Right. Okay, move on. Jacks. So we uh block a pair, maybe that makes a difference. Let's dive into this one in a second. As in, check it out maybe with the other deuce. So again, oh, right, right, um. Okay, we're going back to the first hand after this one. Oh, and I need to start the poll. Cause I forgot I wanted to do something with the queen-nine-seven-six earlier from earlier. Ah, never mind. I was gonna see if oh no, we still can do it. Never, ignore everything I said in the last five seconds. And start betting here. I don't know, we don't block kings, we don't block queens. Well, I couldn't even tell you what I would do at run time with this one right now at the top of my head. I think I'd bet at a decent clip too, but for the, uh, this time around, I'm gonna go with a lot of checking here, unblocking kings and queens, which are always gonna call and often enough are gonna call us down too. So maybe more of, more of a check? Let's see. Um, very much mixed, um, slightly in favor of betting. Ah, that's a good question, Roland. What turn do we want if we check? That's an, that's a good question. Well like a, like a nine, a 10. Could give some future bluffing, give some future blockers, but us not blocking an eight very much, or pretty much not at all, also means that we are gonna be up against a 10-8 uh at, at some frequency as well. So that's a, that's a very valid question. Yeah, so maybe favor betting because of that. So the first hand we checked out today was the queen-nine-seven-six, and I was curious about one thing, which we bet at 69% there. Higher bet if not two backdoor flush draws. Yeah, okay, let's do that first. And also maybe if you don't have a deuce. Maybe that's lowest betting frequencies. So let's go with this one for now, is queen-jack-jack. So the weakest ones get better a little bit more, well, just a tiny clip more often. So generally speaking, there's a lot of, oh, wait, 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 I have the wrong hand. What the hell am I putting in there? Jesus Christ. Okay. Higher if deuce. Yeah, I think so too. I would assume that too. Come by a king. Yep, yep. So what's the deal? The weakest one do, so that actually is true, the, the hard ones get better 100% here. Just a pattern we, that has become very apparent recently. And two backdoor flush draws, wait. Okay, so there's some, you know, a few checkers, like both of them have a backdoor, have two backdoor flush draws, right? But that, that's the point where some solver voodoo, some solver randomizing, whatever is going on, where the solver says, okay, with these two suits up at 100%, these two suits up at 60% of the time. Doesn't really concern me at all. As in, I don't think it's something I need to memorize. So let's go with like the five, maybe? Or the four, which doesn't block the eights much at all. And that changes a lot. We went from 80% c-betting to 18% c-betting. Let's maybe go with something that does block the eight. Again, a huge difference. I would think the nine, um, probably in the same region. Maybe even higher? Yeah, okay, same numbers, basically. With the six, where we are further removed from the eight, so with the seven, we had what, 80? No, sorry, 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 40%. The six, slightly higher. Can't figure out why. Don't think it's, hmm. No, can't. No clue why the six gets better a little bit more often than the seven here. I guess it's weaker. Like if you do make a pair of sevens, it's slightly better than a pair of sixes, I don't know. Not block eight, but more uh backdoor reps, yeah. So higher bet if not two backdoor flush draws. Let's go back to that hand and make it single suited. Looks like, hang on, what was, what was it in general? Double suited was no. So straight, um, the blocking two suits is important, even if we don't necessarily block the suits that are, have two backdoor flush draws ourselves, but we're just blocking two backdoor flush draws. Get removal, just noticed some things planning around. Expect a wheel combos. Okay, yeah. Yeah. Great, there is the deuce on board, yeah, true. Oh, good point. So with the single suited ones, we bet uh the way low frequency. Okay. And right, I do wanna go back to the queen-nine-seven-six from a little earlier. Just like a forty, uh seventy-thirty deal. Seven-six, so of course we're only gonna shop with this hand double suited here. And again, except for like one perfectly double-suited one, which is similar to the ones, to the one we had, but slightly weaker since the, it's a queen high and a seven-high flush draw. Looks like the weakest ones get better at a higher frequency again. Okay, cool. Or do, not necessarily the weakest, the weaker ones. That's a good point. The solver does love, just like the jack-ten, to a lesser extent, but just like that, the solver does love the six-five uh in particular. And we do block, that's a good point. Excellent point. So, yeah. Appreciate you saying that. Is king-nine-seven. Block kings do better against queens than with most other hands we've seen so far. And block the eight by proxy. Sorry about that. So, hmm. Yeah, I kinda like the c-betting here too. Sounds decent to me. Let's go with it. Not only is it uh c-bet often, it's c-bet always. Cool. Queen-five-five, one of those double pair double-suited hands. I have a feeling about this one. Curious what yours are. I'm just noticing I'm often touching my face when I stream, so if Corona gets near me, I'll, I'll get it for sure. Not that I'm buried. Oh, FFG betting here. Interesting. I'm really interested to see what the solver will do. I think it's gonna be a mix, and I probably would mix this one myself right now already, which might be wrong. So I'm gonna go with the check. A little bit more often maybe than the bet. Yeah, cool. But both is uh correct, uh expected value. Looking pretty similar. Nine-eight. So a dream flop for us, basically. Very unlikely we're beaten by pocket deuces. Just to see the frequencies here as well, um, cause he's being a check a lot. But since we are also betting a lot of hands that you know, don't have an ace, maybe we bet this one to sort of protect our betting range, I guess. That thing. Like it is. Um, so there's nothing to protect against here. There are no straight draws possible, no flush draws possible, so I would guess it's more of a check. No. Just base 90% a bet, so you know what, I wouldn't mess around here and just bet mostly 100, bet pretty much 100%. Well, we're certainly betting for value. We, we, we don't, oh, we don't block uh kings, queens, jacks. It was like an that's interesting. Let's go with an ace-ace, king-eight, where you do block kings. See if that changes. No, not at all. Well, yeah, it makes it 100% bet, but whatever. Two backdoor flush draws, yeah. See that? Makes it even more of a bet, basically. Like I would just call this 100%. Alright, alright. Yeah, we're betting for value, and I would think that sort of protecting our betting range does play a role here, since so far we bet mostly bet hands that don't have an eight. Ten-eight, um, it's a good one. Yeah, that is a good one. Server Bates nine? Not sure what you mean with server Bates nine. Oh, hates nine, probably. So that does make a difference if us holding the 10. Let's take out the why is it showing me deuces in there? What the hell? Is this ten-eight? No, there was something weird going on here, so uh doesn't change anything either, the ten-eight. I would think the eight deuce ma- might mean a change here. Now we just block way too much. Hey, it's okay, yeah, I figured. I normally am good at creative reading, but this time it took me a moment. I'm only on coffee number one today. Alright, so the only thing that makes um like all the difference in the world here is if you're blocking the deuce as well. Maybe a king-queen. Okay, so that also, if you block both of them, oh, hang on, now we don't have an eight, of course. Never mind, never mind, never mind. Yeah, and the ace-ace, king-eight, didn't make a difference at all, if I recall correctly. Yeah. Cool. This is queen-jack, and we also can um switch out the board. This stream will be a little longer, like the last one yesterday was only 90 minutes, I think this one will go for at least two hours. There's much value, we started it. Yeah. What do we do with the CS eight-eight? I think it still gets bet, doesn't, it's not 100% check probably. Okay, come play my games. You will apparently make some money. Oh, hang on, uh aim triple, not aim triple T, oh MFG. Sorry, your names sometimes look similar. Um, okay, made a fool of my, out of myself twice. Um, now I started a poll, oh MFG, so we feed a wall again. It's a queen-jack. Oh, no backdoor flush draws. Yeah, it's one with the hearts, right? That's probably, that, you might be right, that we're looking at a high percentage c-betting here. Yeah. Let's see if in here the weakest ones get checked for change? Like quote-unquote weakest? Like quote unquote weakest. Yeah, we have one backdoor flush draw. So around seventy percent a bet. Hey. Speaking of you, welcome back, Aim Triple T. In case you're wondering why to speak in of you, I was just, I had just confused O M F G's names with yours since they start, you know, with a lot of letters, uh letters, letters, both of them. Nothing sinister. All right. Ten eight. Two backdoor flush draws and same situations with the blockers unblock aces though, but we shouldn't be up against aces a lot here at all. No, not at all. Like what aces call the three bet, that's hundred hundred B B and don't go over the top. So yeah, never. That's that's not a factor at all. Hmm. So I'd say a high frequency bet. Looking forward to the home game tonight, Aim Triple T. I'll see if I can defend my bounty this time. Got close last week. Roland's also betting. Sounds pretty good to me here. Betting thirty three percent. Ninety nine percent c-bet. Again, we blocked the eights quite neatly. And we also, we have an easy let go if we get raised. Is this a nine? So far, by the way, we only have one wrong. I don't know if that maybe that means we picked an easier spot or maybe we're getting better at this. Deep betting here. Yeah, and we can, I think we can um do this for like another twenty minutes and then dive into another spot or into another flop at least. Yeah. And here it's very much mixed now. Where's the with the expected value being quite similar. Okay. Let's see how the changes from the. I don't know if you're blocking the eight a little better. I guess we are blocking the eight a little bit better in this one. Because there's certainly awesome king eight combos out there and there's some uh eight six combos out there. Betting here, betting betting here as well, I think. A little bit more of a c-bet, but still very much a lot of mixing going on. And I think that like a lot of us would do this already. I know I do. That this is a spot where I don't, you know, have a frequency in mind where I go like, I doesn't this often. I randomize and check doesn't this often I bet. But I do know that I already employ a mixed frequency with this hand on boards like this. Ace, King, ten, eight. So the only the second hand we have, the dust container, Nate. First one was ace, ace, nine, eight, which was a hundred percent c-bet. So is this a bet or is this a check back to protect our checking range? And my hunch would be that we're not gonna see this one c-bet hundred percent at the very least. So I'm gonna go with the check here. We have an easier time filling up as opposed to the ace, ace, nine, eight. Lower aids be interesting. We don't have that many of them. Well, the the run downs and stuff, yeah. Yeah, let's uh modify. Yeah, you know what? We could modify this with a few buckets for the last hands that we check out for this uh particular board. Before we move on to another board. Because today I do want to go through a bunch of boards. Wait, not next. I'm gonna go with the check. Hundred percent c-bet again. So the lower aids will be interesting. You're right. Let's do that. Close this, add a few buckets. So. Wait. We go with the more general categories. I think that's fine. We don't need to like finely grained. Go with run downs, run downs, middle low pairs, middle low pairs. Maybe just go with these four. You don't have any like ragged low card hands here. It's gonna be some some form of run downs. Yeah, they already include one, two, uh zero, one or two gaps, so that's just fine for us. Well, let's go with that. How does that change? Okay, now we bet a c-bet a slight c-bet slightly less with this. Is it Queen, King, Queen? It's okay, okay. Let's add that added bucket. And it would probably be double suited, three broadways, one non-broadway and two broadways, two low connectors. Yeah, that that'll probably do. Oh, search for these. Um, sure. Let me just save that. Give me a second. Where's my training syntax here? Sure. Let's do some general research, so to say. How do we remove the? Oh, no, we did. Okay. So without an eight. Uh without an ace. Bet a little bit more and uh I guess we have an eight without an ace, so. Similar betting frequencies uh from earlier in general. King eight. Hundred percent bet. If you don't have the ace, does it change if you do have an ace? Yeah. So it's just in general, the eights get bet pretty heavily here. Queen eight, king eight, doesn't really change that much. Check it. Okay, that makes it a little bit lower. That makes it, there's quite, there's a significant difference there. Once we go from the queen to the jack. Yeah, so the lower the side cards go, the less frequently we bet. Do a few more and then switch up the board, I'd say. Check ten three. Looks like we have plenty of bluffs in the spot, so we might not need to turn this one into one. Lock an eight a little bit, check eight, ten, eight. All right, right. Good point, Roland. Uh we'll do that after this hand. Excellent point. So I'm gonna say this is a check and probably a hundred percent. Oh, all right. Looks like we don't have enough bluffs here. Okay, cool. Ron start would have checked here as well. Kind of makes me feel a little better. Okay, so about that. Give us the check eight, shooting ace, king, queen. Ah, that does make a big difference if we don't have have the high cards. So let's check this out. Okay. Yeah, okay. So the lower we, and you see this uh c-bet number drops off quite quickly. There's still c-betting going on. But these side cards do make a difference. And maybe the lower we get, uh it might rise again. No? Yeah. Okay, so kickers, uh kickers in general enter our domination issues are a thing on this board. We're gonna check back the weaker rates quite a bit, the especially the weaker they get. All right. All right, don't think I can deal with this music while we have a study stream. Okay, where did it go? Damn it. This is the all the windows have their own thinking in the taskbar. This is the only one that doesn't have one right now, so I always need to switch the windows around. Or to get back to it. Okay, I think a couple of more hands and then we'll move to a slightly different board. Check seven, five. Now I'm a little bit uncertain after the last hand was a hundred percent bet, what this one's gonna be. O F G right on with the betting. Um. No hope of check. It's a good point. I'm still gonna go with the check, but I like that point. And I wouldn't be surprised if you're right on the money. Yep, me you are. Okay, the bet setting is thirty three percent. It's a three bet part. Yeah, okay, yeah, yeah. And you know what? I probably I would see that a lot decent clip of my range here anyway, so. Sounds good to me. Ten, five, four. The same story here. The no hope of check uh factor being the the largest influencer. Yeah. Go through a few of these relatively quickly, maybe without a poll before we um move on to another board. See but here just to see what does not get c-bet is Queen four, four. So this one gets checked, for example. Because of backdoor flush for two, yeah. Pac-Man, welcome back. Okay, so the ace queen does get bet a lot, but um apparently the ones, wait, isn't there a syntax for pocket pairs? Give me a second. Pocket pair, pocket pair. Yeah. Was it? Uh you know it, Pac-Man. You know it. So with the pocket pairs, let's take away the high ones. Ace, ace, king, queen. Maybe even down to nines. Our syntax. Um there might there there could be some R R in this one would be. I don't know what it would be in this one. But it's uh showing me the um zero, like O pair, zero pair. Oh, no. O for one, one pair. Okay, there you go. And two pair would be D P for double paired. And those get like first the low pocket pairs is basically a hundred percent check. All right, cool. Do the let's go through them, which maybe uh like the ones I excluded here, nines and tens, I think would be interesting. Start some betting here. At the highest frequency, betting the weakest ones. Don't have an ace high flush draw. And I guess for ten, ten, and now goes up. No. Again, c-betting the high, uh the weakest ones, quote unquote. That's interesting. So the cutoff point seems to be Jax, Ace, Queen, Ace, King. Ace, King, King, Queen. No trips, no bet. You'd be surprised what we had already. Okay. So we check most, uh we check most of the low pairs. Good question. Um, let's check this out. So what was the syntax? I believe it was O P. Is Queen a pair? Like in very generally speaking, let's take out at least the aces and kings here, as we saw that makes a huge difference. Um. Generally speaking, we check sixty four percent with the ace queen. With the ace king, we bet a little bit more, right? No. So yeah, the bet frequency is very different. Well, okay, I guess it's a little bit of a stronger hand. Cool. Go through a few more. Just want to see, always check with no trips. Simple rule. That's not what we've seen. So I'm high card, high pair potential, yeah. I think that's a major factor. I just want to go click through a few more and then we'll change the board. So c-bet here a lot here. Now it's a mixed strategy without the ace. Let's see. Ace, Queen, Jack ten as opposed to the Ace, King, Jack ten gets bet uh way more often. If we do make it the King, Jack ten. Okay, not a huge difference actually with the, yeah, pretty much the same. I wouldn't. Okay, not a huge difference, actually, we'll see, yeah, pretty much the same, I wouldn't... Ace queen should bet way more than, lemme, lemme see. Is jack four four, I think that's what you meant. White Ben Plum, thank you very much for the follow, cheers! Nah, it's too weak. Apparently. And we unblock kings and queens. Yeah, now the ten and the nine probably gonna go up slightly because we start blocking eights a little bit more here. Alright. Three three, we've seen that one, so it's with the ace king, so it should be checked. Quite a bit, yep. Queen six five, probably betting is a pure bluff here a lot. Not very much mixed, okay? Ace king king, okay, that's an... Interesting one for that one, I'm gonna put the poll up, cause I'm... Think that one might be cool. After this, we'll change the board to something different. Maybe go with a different paired board? This is a pretty, you know, tame one, there are no, uh, draws out there at all. Guess this one is super strong, we could probably check this one a lot. Obviously, we don't have the eight, so it's not super, super strong, but we're not really, uh... If we're not beat right now, we're not worried too much about turns. Like a queen and a jack sometimes gives our opponent a full house. Hey Pilot Ray, welcome back! But other than that, probably more of a check, right? Oh, just a PSA type of deal, if you guys wanna watch the Phil Gaffan challenge, it is live right now, and it is start in roughly seven minutes, I believe. Check, Ofg betting here, I don't see a fault with betting either, and I would be shocked if it's 100% check. Don't shock me, don't shock me. Just 100% bet, no, two ways about it. It's a pretty good emote right there, right, Pacman? I think it's almost impossible to make it out in the chat, but, uh, the... If I hover over it and see the bigger... The bigger picture, so to say. It's alright, I like it. Okay, let's move on to a different paired board, maybe. And take away the buckets for now, I would think, or we already did, since we don't have them as a filter. Okay, moving on to a different board, post flop ranges, three bet parts, we are in position still. The only spots we have currently is button versus cutoff subject to change pretty soon, where we'll have... A plethora of spots to change, to choose from, I expect. So paired, go for a different paired board. By the way, do the bet sizes change on different boards? Uh, but they do. So on a paired board, check this out, on a paired board... That's interesting right there already. We always bet, uh, 33%. On a monotone board, so three of a suit, we always bet 33%. In position. So this study session, I have a challenge, Mr. Gaffant. I'm still looking for some extra change to do that myself, turning over all the couch cushions. And on a straight board, we bet 50%, and on an unpaired board, we bet 50%. So it is the more, uh, way ahead, way, way behind boards, although I guess the straight board... Curious to see that we, the, the straight board finishes, fits that description as well. But there we bet 50%. That's curious, I'll try my best to keep that in mind. Okay. Monotone board maybe next, I thought I'd be interested in that one as well. And now let's go for the, I believe the 1088 is... Pretty interesting, cause this one is also double suited. It goes way down on a straight board, out of position, yeah, yeah. I think it's basically 100% check, I believe. But unfortunately, I cannot check it out, at least not for these positions. Um, so that's alright, but we now have a, what's the board? Damn it. 1088, right, I believe. Ten of spades, eight of diamonds, eight of spades. Ten of spades, eight of diamonds, eight of spades. Let's update, uh... Poll and the, um, overly description. Cool. Pacman's second German, this bucket tool. Um, who made this tool? And is it the solution? Is it your, your, one, uh, all-in-one solution for PLO? Uh, the bucket tool is from the mastermind, the PLO mastermind. Right now, it's free for mastermind members, I believe, don't quote me on it yet. It might be at an extra charge later on, and you can also buy it, uh, that I know for sure, you can in the future also buy it... I would assume for a monthly price, if you're not a mastermind member. And is it the one-stop solution for PLO? I don't know yet. It might come close-ish, since you can do pre-flop, you can do post-flop. Uh, by the way, next week, we'll compare it to... PLO visions. Alright. Just like ten and jack, yeah, I think it's, comes pretty close. And this is a very different board from the other one. It is from Mr. Jan Anders, well, he didn't personally program the tool, but, uh, it's, yeah. So, uh, actually... I don't know, I don't know how to answer this question. I, I think design-wise and feature-wise, he probably has the largest impact on... The features that this tool offers. Yeah. I would guess. It's calling range so much harder, it does indeed, yeah. We're up a lot, uh, uh, up against a lot of strong hands here. And matter of fact, let me bring this back up here. Here we bet significantly less now. Just 50, wait, why aren't these ranges adding up? Hang on, lemme, I need to redo this. Like, nothing changed, changes pre-flop. Post-ranges, three bet part, in position. Aird. First check. Okay, okay, I think I had something wrong here, just to make sure, cause I... I don't really have OCD, but in these spots, I tend to make doubly sure. It would suck if we have the wrong initial condition set. Wait, and that would be the wrong initial condition here, cause we're looking for paired boards, we're in position. I think this number's not, don't think it's gonna change now. Right, there we go. If not, I will take copyright, no problem. Hasn't, every time I move the other window, it's, oh no, nevermind, there it is, back in the foreground. So... Let's start the poll for this one. The initial conditions are the same, we, the hero, are on the button, we re-raise, we three-bet a cutoff race first in, we get called, it gets checked to us on the 1088, two spades board. And we're looking at what to do with the jack seven six five. And this is, actually, this is a board I'm gonna be very curious about. And this is a good starting hand, where I'm already in, so I, I would... So far, I'll be honest, I would check at 100%. I have a feeling, OMFG might be onto something with sometimes betting here. Be shocked if it's 100% bet, but maybe it's 100% check, would, that part wouldn't surprise me. Know that, know that. We need to bluff something, yeah, but not only is it like a, maybe we could bet, yeah, right? It's just 100%, that's kinda freaking me out here. Obviously, we folded two arrays. Unless we have a super read. That 100%, so, yeah, I mean, we blocked a ten a little bit, we blocked the eight quite nicely, and crazy, yeah, I'm gonna file this one under crazy as well, for now. One bluff in PLO, you found the one bluff that, that exists in PLO. I was stumped when people say there's more bluffing going on in Hold'em, and, well, actually, oh, there's little bluffing going, going on in PLO, let me phrase it like that. Cause actually, I do see when I watch other streamers, a lot of bluffing in Hold'em. Just constantly, basically, since it's much harder to hit a board. Bluff with 100 outs. Um, yeah, not, there's not a single out out there that's gonna make us laugh getting called. River of value versus check raise, not falling any, not equity. We cannot see the river right now, I, I believe it's something, at least a turn we could see in PLO visions, we'll check that out next week. And for now, we don't have... Like, anything that happens past this point in the game tree. I suspect this will change for the bucket tool as well. I hope the name of the bucket tool changes. As well. Alright. So that was a 100% bet. Interesting. C-bet is only 33% on this board? Yes. On the pair, on all the paired boards. Yes, only 33% of the pot. Realize equity, allow X check down to occur. Yes, C-bet 33%, so we can continue on the turn, yeah, if you want. Um, I like the checking here, Roland, personally as well, so I'm gonna go with it too. I don't know if I restarted the poll, I believe I did. Turn goes check, check so often, yeah. Cause we bluff with lowest sizing, yeah, also, yeah. G checking here as well. Scroll up, I said a few things, oh, we'll do. It's the, am I missing anything? It's the let us see the river, not much value. Oh, it lets us see the river, I misunderstood, yeah. Yeah, yeah, with the, uh, jack ten seven six, if we bet there once, we are in position, so we're gonna get checked into... On the turn quite a bit, like, there's very little turn docking on, uh, is gonna be going on. And then we can check behind on the turn, we can see the river, I get what you mean, yeah, that's an excellent point, that's, that's a very excellent point, yeah, by betting once here in position, we will get to see a lot of rivers. If we want to. Alright, I'm gonna go with check, but it is a 100% bet again. I like two, but I think one, all in, we're in the three bet pot. OMFG says, uh, two, yeah? Crazy indeed. This tool is kaput. Two spade removal, ten equity versus eight, yeah, we can turn on ten, that's true, if we get called. Probably not getting raised that much. Plenty of aids will call. So here we have one backdoor flush draw, and one, well, it's a double suited ten, the other backdoor flush draw is not on the board for us. This is still... Not too much of a bluff with the ten x, yeah. You might be right, that we just have a lot of bluffs with the ten x here. So mixing, that's the first mixed spot we have, in backdoors, we do, yeah. Oh, we also have a gutter here. So if we're bluffing, we are bluffing, uh, sometimes with equity. When I say sometimes, it's that if, if we do get called, we do narrow our opponent's range, we block kings, aces are not in our opponent's range anymore. I would say pretty much never. Might be triple rare without an ace, yeah. Might be a good candidate too. Agreed. Turning the gutter, I believe, would either be a check or a bet fold. Probably a bet fold, we don't wanna check like a non-spade nine rolling off. Giving a free card to a flush draw. So this time, we don't block a pair off the board, have two backdoor flushes, what's gonna happen with this? Block the eight quite nicely by proxy though. Tough to black, uh, block it any harder without actually having an eight. Except maybe make the five and nine. 50/50? Could be. Honestly, but up until now, I would have checked this. More, the vast majority of the time at least. But that's why I do this training too, maybe not do that in the future anymore. We need, we need to bet it sometimes, sometimes check it. Sounds reasonable. So I'm gonna go with the option that I would have chosen, and let's take a look at the frequencies. 100% bet, 100% bet again. So this is an interesting board, man, oh, hang on, I need to save the situation. Yeah, a lot of wild moments so far, right? So you know, if we, uh, have, we, we, apparently we have a lot of bluffs here. 100%, I'm a fucking PLO, me too, man, me too, I mean, I knew it about myself, but it's just becoming more and more apparent. Yeah, so I could see the, I kind of understand, we, again, we do have the two backdoors, if we get called, we don't get raised all that often. We take it down quite a bit in the three bet pot. Hmm... Then we block the eight pretty much perfectly without having an eight. Does it make a difference if we have the jack nine, seven six? Don't think we need to put double suited in there, cause we're not gonna shop with a single suited jack nine here. Okay, so to get a better overview of this, let's go with your original hand first, so we see those numbers here. No, that's of course the wrong thingy. There you go. Right, so to make this hand stronger, also blocking our opponent's continuation range a little bit more. Although no, that's not a factor since I think. Yeah. Since we don't really have a made hand. Where's the Jack nine of spades here with the straight flush draw? Bet this 100%. Okay. So bet this one at a way lower frequency than the ones without the nine, without the rap, basically. Check nine for sure bet. You would think, right? You would think. It's more of a check a little bit than a bet, and it's way less of a bet than the Jack seven six five. Crazy shit, man. Think like spades critical. Let's see, are they? Yeah, they are. We do check some spades, but you know, very much at a mixed frequency. And bet the biggest ones and the straight flush. Draw. Hundred percent fold without. I mean fold. Like if you get raised or what? I'm just gonna check without. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. Um, close. Yeah, let's call it 100% check. And some mixing with some spades in here as well. It's all about the spade. It actually is here, yeah. You're very, very much right. It's actually all about having... No, it's very much about the spades, yeah. Very true. So... Let's see. On the other board, the high kicker made a bet a lot of the time, right? The lower the kicker gets, the more we start checking. So of course we flop super strong. Is one to protect the checkback range, or is it one sort of to protect the betting range? I think it's gonna be a bet at a high, very high frequency, if not 100%. But so far, we've bet a lot of, well, not crap, but nothing that makes us happy if we get raised. Must be a better, right? I think so too. I think so too. Okay, 100%, cool. Isn't raising versus 8x to be honest? Well, there's some, like the 8 seven six five, something like that. There's at our level, however. That's a good point, yeah. That's a good point. I mean, still the 10 eight seven six, something like that also still gets raised. Seven six five. So so far, we've seen a lot of, um, I'm gonna say like sort of semi-bluffs. Most of 10s we would have bet so far, again, would have made us happy if we get raised, but there were some turns that could make us a hand in all of them. Versus 8x and puts in tough spots, yeah. Like, oh, opponents holding versus 8x, yeah. Yeah, for sure. Do we need this bluff? Or is this gonna be 100% check? At this point, I'm not gonna be surprised about anything. If it says 100% c-bet, I'll probably just move back to no limit hold'em. Actually, no. I'll move back to limit hold'em. Oh, she said one is giving up a go too? Solid reasoning. Bluff a spade, we're bluffing, and we get wrecked. Alright, I'm gonna go with the check. Okay, limit hold of it is, man. This is too much. What funky spot is this? I quit, right? You and me both, man. I'll hold open the door for you. Jesus. Okay, this be a board we're gonna come back to. So far, we have... Well, I don't wanna say we, I. We have two correct answers out of six. Wow. So nothing, not much to be said about this one. We do block the eights nicely. Now that I think about it. Um... No, but don't block backdoor flush draw, so maybe with a second barrel on turns, like make a four of hearts roll off, we can bet again. Gonna do, so nine of spades on a turn. I'd say 100% check. Well, we actually, we do gain some short on some short on value on that card. Check give up. Yeah, betting at this point feels like lighting money on fire. Crazy end indeed, man. Eight seven seven. Could see this sometimes being a bet. We have kind of no backdoors. Yeah, absolutely none, I believe. Hang on, I think we had one backdoor flush draw, but whatever. No, actually, no, we didn't. This must be bet two. I bluff all shit. Yeah, right. That's what it's getting to. I'm starting to fear you might be right. Yeah, I'm gonna go with the check, and I think this one's gonna be mixed, would be my prediction. Like, not always betting and not always checking. I think strategy-wise, not hand-wise for Solvarian. Yeah, yeah. That's true. And it's something I have to, we have equity to realize on turn, yeah. Air with gutter makes a defense super wide, um, and tough turns that work in theory at moment for air, yeah. Yeah, if this is a 100% bet, things get really crazy. And realizing equity here, that's true. We do have some, the two sevens. Flare raise, welcome back. Um, so some betting here. We had some crazy shit happening so far. I'm gonna go with the check. Okay. Okay, I give up. I give up, man. Um, so one takeaway for this is, um, I'll have to see if there's a video covering similar spots in the mastermind, because apparently I played this. All my instincts here are completely wrong. The bets have it. Well done, Flare raise and Roland. We could look into it, see if there are any combinations of this that sometimes get checked. I doubt it. The ones that don't have a backdoor nut flush draw. Still makes a difference. Yeah, no backdoor flush draw, yeah, right? What's on the board? It's spades and diamonds, so we're looking for clubs and hearts, basically. Yeah, gets bet at half, like 50%, 40%. The only ones that get checked, get checked always are... Yeah, ones that are not drawing to nut flush. To A, not flush. Wants to wait. Alright, I'll wait. Flare is saying no big point in checking while blocking continuation range. And we have some EV and some fold EV, yeah. That's a... That's a good point. I don't think we have this one single suited as a three bet. Remember, it's a three bet pot I put it in, but... Yeah, no, excluding double suited and single suited, uh, wait, that would be rainbow, spade, spade. Well, but we have all of them here. Oh, spade, spade, hang on. Uh, just put this in there as described. So without diamonds, without spades. That's an interesting one. Yeah, good point. So this one, I would just say we bet the c-bet this one at 100% then. Alright, alright, alright. Maybe do a few more, and then I'll take like an hour break and come back with the home game later on tonight. And also, there's gonna be something special later happening past midnight. Sassy, saucy, French streamer asked me to join him for a Maka solver analysis stream, which will happen on his channel. I'll announce it on Twitter in case you're interested. I am aware it's probably not in many of you guys' time zone, or just not a great time for most of you, but still. No spades, spade, no diamond. Okay, yeah. No diamonds, no spades. So keep that one in mind. I wasn't 100%, I wasn't aware of that. Syntax. Alright, cool. Not single suited, yeah, yeah. No spades, no diamonds. So only the combos that don't have diamonds or spades. Ten nine. I hesitate to guess here now. I'd say bet at a high frequency, if not 100%. Very similar to a hand we had earlier that was better at a high frequency, I believe. Scared twos, yeah. Scared two, I mean. I will never check a Pilo again. I just thought something very similar about this board in particular at least, yeah. Alright, 95%, okay. Eight ten eight. Yeah, well phrased, Pacman. Jesus, we are right. Always bet. Yeah, seems to be the pattern. Well, this time around, we don't block any low cards. Don't block any raps that maybe could bluff raise us on this board, bluff check raise us. So maybe this is more of a check? I'm gonna go with check. And if it is a check, I would at least expect it to be very mixed still. Hundred percent, hundred percent, all of you guys have it. Nitty me. What am I thinking? Yeah, right. Beat you by a second. Anyone know why this is now a three betting range? It's a bluff. Like this one, you fold to a re-raise. Actually, let me check this one out in the matrix, see what we do with the perfectly single suited and the double suited ones here. It's a valid question. Yeah, whether it is to balance, uh, as far as I'm aware, this one is to balance our three betting range. It's still a strong hand. If you get called, you know, we can, first of all, we have fold equity in position. Not broadways and high cards, uh, referring to this hand. Oh, for the three betting range here, but if we're not suited to the ace, we drop this one to re-raise. And this is what I do. I wouldn't three bet this one always necessarily. So it depends on my opponent. Yeah, call with ace suit and three bet. Well, we already three betting, three betting double suited. Let's see, it is button versus cutoff. First the ace, king, queen, ten. And this is where the solutions for... Oh, hang on, this would be Pilo 50 right now. We're working with Pilo 500 ranges. Because all the post-flop simulations have been done for Pilo 500, so let me redo that. It stakes. Recall is ten single suited, three by a screen is king. Yeah, sounds right to me. So matters which... Yeah, okay, now, which one was that? The queen jack, right? King ten. Ace, king, queen, ten. So the solver, like the metrics, uh, still would play this one slightly different, with just call here. And actually reserve the raising for the queen ten. No, actually, would call in both cases, ideally single suited, which is this lineup here, or triple suited, not ideally single suited, but that's due to like small variations in the way they set up the simulations. That's not a huge deal, Viva's, I am certain. And as you can see, the queen jack, jack ten do get raised, and they do get raised folded, so that part is certainly correct. And with the perfectly double suited ace, king, can re-raise call, and also with the non-perfectly double suited, we raise call. Cool. Not raise, raise though. That's something that might trip somebody up. That's just starting off with Pilo. Queen to nine. Well, I sense a pattern. I have a feeling what the action is gonna be here. I got the feeling. Block aces, kings. Ace is pretty unlikely. Once we post-flop, aces are very, very much unlikely. Like, the out-of-position player, I don't... There's, once you get three bets, I guess there is some room for trapping, but we reserve that for the very strongest one, the ace, ace, king, king, ace, ace, jack, ten, double suited, stuff like that. Chippy for all. Thank you very much for following. Appreciate it. Yeah, so everybody betting here, and I am too, for the record, this time. I'm trying to denitify myself. Also, welcome, welcome to the channel, Chippy. We'll have a home game later on, if that interests you, in one and a half hours, 90 minutes. We play a home game on Stars. It's a like 6 euro free role play money tournament. There's a bounty of 1 euro on my head. And just as I'm saying that out loud, I'm realizing if you were to be interested in playing with us tonight, it might not happen. Somebody applied for the Home Game Club earlier today, and there has been a PokerStars update, and I can review the application, but I cannot approve the application right now, which really is the most important part. It's a pretty slick Seinfeld reference. Anywho. Uh, yeah, betting here. Okay, I'm done for the day. Now we do a few more, but it is still a bet, but it is mostly a check now. LOL again. This, I think this, like the... I think the bucket tool is screwing with us. I think the bucket pool is screwing with us, man. I will put the home game info in there, uh, in the chat, but be advised that it might not be possible for you to join tonight. Look at ace, ace versus, okay, let's do that. So ace, queen, XX, without, uh, diamonds, without spades? Is what Roland is asking about? No, ace, queen with diamonds without spades? Very much a mix. 50/50 here? And then the other one, ace-ten, same setup, ace-ten with diamonds without spades, so now it's 50/50? Alright. Without diamonds. Get rid of... Oh, right. Oh, right, I, I see what you mean. Get rid of triple-suited ones. Bets a little bit more often. Checks a little less often. And with the ace-ten. Again, ace-ten bets a little bit more often yet than the ace, what was it? Ace, queen? And if you get rid of triple-suited, nothing much changes here. Remove aces. Yeah. So removing the aces doesn't change that much. Yes, when it comes to betting frequencies, as you can see. Alright, yeah, do, do, do a few more, two, three more, and I think then we call it a session for today. Ace, queen, seven, seven. So the last one was very much mixed for reasons that I'm not confident, uh, going into right now. So spot, uh, so this, this spot, I'll do something to review it, see if I can find a mastermind video on it or talk it through with someone, and then come back to it next week. This is, this was the first really hair-raising spot where I was mostly wrong. Plenty wrong in other spots, but not the majority of the time wrong. Here, I would venture this is a bet at a very high frequency, if not 100%. As you've seen, that doesn't mean anything in this spot, what I think. Pacman says, "I will check again." 91%, so make it 100. 10-9-8, now we finally have a strong hand. Actually, the super, the second nuts is what we got. What do we do with the second nuts? So the, gonna be 100% check? People have kinda all hands, yeah, all hands, yeah, yeah, seems so. We have to check here, let's think, think too, this is just too strong, we block the flush draws, we block, uh, straight draws with holding the nine. We hold the second nuts. Block tens, well, that is a good thing, but... I think it has to be a check. A bit high on bluff, yeah, yeah. Setting, setting yourself up for cheap bluff. And really, I, I would suspect the bet sizing doesn't make a huge difference on a on a paired board, like if you decide to go for 50% here, that's just... It's gonna have the same, same effect, is what I mean. Too many blockers, check, Flare says, "Yeah, I think 100% check here." Let's see. King-ten, nine, eight, check it out first if there... There's some checking going on. There is a lot with hearts or with a heart, so the single-suited ones, but it's, uh, even then, it's very much mixed. And how about if you take away the nine? Maybe turn it into, sorry, turn it into the queen? Try with the seven first, I think that is still a three-bet double-suited, this one gets bet pretty much always. Yeah, okay. So, uh, blocking a nine is pretty crucial here. Blocking the open enders, blocking the raps. Although again, we are only betting the ones that don't have spades. Well, we can't have, yeah, 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 yeah. Was that true here as well? Blocks more calling range, yeah. Good takeaway. 10, 7, 4. Gonna say, I'm not gonna say anything. From where's, yeah, agreed, we just blocked way too much. But the nine, uh, so the nine in the spades, a huge factor there in the previous hand, something to remember, I guess. I don't think we can go wrong if you just assume we're betting everything now. Oh, I didn't start the poll, excuse me. But I count the answers in spirit, go with the bet. It is still a bet, but while it's very much mixed, uh, excuse me. Excuse me. Some stretching needed. Well, it's very much mixed, here we check a bit more. Quite a bit more. Check seven versus... Check four-suited, yeah, I know what you mean. It flashes matter that much. I... I don't know. So make it spades, at the very least that we have spades in there. Wait, doesn't work? Is it just... Without that? No, so I... Fifty. Yeah, it's 50/50, with the jack-seven. Actually, he's slightly leaning towards checking with the jack-seven, leaning quite a bit towards checking. Bet a little bit more often with two back, sorry, two backdoors. It says a spade, spade, right? But it doesn't seem to work. Do you have to capitalize it? Nah, that doesn't seem to make a difference. And I thought the dollar sign would... Yeah, neither one of them works. So I don't know about that. It's a slightly difference in text than from... Oh, that, oh, oh, and spades, yeah, that's a good point. There you go, very nice, thank you. Okay, still, doesn't change all that much, still heavily favors checking now. Two more, I say, let's do this one and another one. Oh, yeah, yeah. Good timing too. And betting here. Very similar to a hand we had earlier, right? Damn it, I can't remember the result from that. Because the last half hour has been too confusing. Think there was a high frequency, if not 100% bet, a similar one. As long as you bet flop, yeah. And if somebody tells you you are doing it wrong, you say, "Yeah, it's a mixed approach." Go for the check this time, Flare is... I believe I did this with a similar hand and I was shown wrong, but I might be wrong. Ah, very much mixed this time around, cool. Cool. Finally, something that isn't wholly confusing. The last one. And it's potentially an interesting one. Don't block a pair of the board, but block the draws and block, well, we block the draws, period. And have the open ender ourselves, of course. Sorry, first the stretching, now the yawning, I don't know what's up today. Hmm... Yeah, but I, yeah, exactly, we blocked a, blocked a nut straight draw. I would think if we do turn the nuts, well, not I would think, I think it's pretty clear that if we, uh, bet and get check raised on a turn, we let it go. Not having the nine changes things. Just the ace-jack. Let's go with the, what was it, what did you guys say, bet? Yeah, probably. This time, 100% check, yeah, you know what, this was a very interesting hand to do last. And man, will we come back to this spot. This has been infuriating. Slightly... Do you say with the ace-jack, nine, exclude aces, exclude king? How was that? Exited 65/35, and if we do add the nine back in, probably have to... Well, duh, never mind, we don't need all the rest. Get the revolver, I have more success with Russian roulette! Yeah, yeah, that's, man, this, this part was something else. I don't think I've ever come away from one of these, uh, theory streams yet more confused than before. This is be, this is the first. So I'll, over the weekend and before the next stream, I'll see if I can dig something up, up about this spot. Educate myself about, a little bit about it, and then we'll come back to it. Oh, MFG, thank you very much for saying that, my pleasure as always, um, maybe put in the raid here, in the meanwhile. Right, so in, I'll be back in roughly an hour with the home game tonight. And if you guys want, I'd be very much down to play some cash games and a home game as well, like one, two, PLO two, one or two cents, refuse to play higher stakes there. We'll start checking lower pairs to turn river for house value. Delay. It's a real short on value, could be... Scoring range, yeah, so it doesn't sound bad at all, uh, Roland, doesn't sound bad at all. Keep that in mind for, uh, next time we are here. Uh, Pacman Brody, thank you very much, white pleasure. Thank you for saying that. So how's the challenge going right now? Phil, up and by, and I love seeing it. Okay, so I'll take a break, see you in an hour with the home game, as I just said, and also tonight, there's gonna be the stream with Tossy Tossy playing around with, uh, Munker solver for heads-up PLO. Check ace, queen, four-four on AD deuce, and that was a, wasn't that 100% bet? Last thing I'm gonna check, because we still have that here? Oh, that was on the, on the other board, yeah. Oh, we checked it, you're right, you're right, right, we didn't check as in, we, we checked it as in our action. Off the play-casino, off the way it's there, see you Sunday. Roland, alright, fingers crossed that the wheel is, the, the whale is gonna be there. If you needed a wheel too. Alright, see you later, thanks for watching. Cheers.